To our January 10th, 2019 City of Palaca Commission meeting. At this time, we're gonna have our empracation by Chief J.R. Grimes and also he will lead us in the pledge. Libra, please stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all here today safely. Bless our commissioners as they make decisions that impact so many of us. Thank you for our wonderful city and just have us have a happy and safe New Year throughout the year of 2019 and for everything you did for us in the year prior. In your name, amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Mayor Charles L. Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Boer.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill is absent with excuse.
Yeah.
So four out of five members are present in the counters for it and you have a call.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the December 12th and December 13th meetings?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our public recognitions, we have two proclamations today. We're gonna start out with our human trafficking awareness proclamation.
So this proclamation is for Freedom 7 Human Trafficking Task Force. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas nearly a century and a half ago President Abraham Lincoln issued the emancipation proclamation, a document that reaffirmed the noble goals of equality and freedom for all that lie at the heart of what it means to live in America. In the years since, we have tirelessly pursued the realization and protection of these essential principles. And whereas despite our successes, thousands of individuals living in the United States can still more abroad suffer in silence under the intolerable yoke of modern slavery. During National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we stand with all those who are held in compelled service. We recognize the people, organizations, and government entities that are working to combat human trafficking. And we recommit to bringing an end to the inexcusable human rights abuse. And whereas human trafficking is a $32 billion a year global criminal enterprise and is a crime as well as a simple and human rights violation, an estimated 25 million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor. And whereas human trafficking endangers the lives of millions of people around the world and it is a crime that knows no borders, human trafficking is a form of modern day slavery, be it for commercialized sexual or labor exploitation. The otherwise multi-layered crime does not have a static profile. It affects children, adults, U.S. citizens, residents, and foreign nationals alike. And whereas this month, we do not simply reflect on the appalling reality, but we also pledge to do all in our power to end the horrific practice of human trafficking that plagues victims around the world and in our neighborhoods. And whereas Human Trafficking Awareness Day is observed on January 11th in municipalities across the country in order to educate the public and raise awareness about human trafficking, and the City of Palaca has a strong commitment to social justice. Now therefore, I chair O'Neil Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, to hereby endorse the month of January 2019 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. In the City of Palaca, we urge all citizens to educate themselves about all forms of modern slavery and the signs and consequences of human trafficking and witness whereof. I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida on this 10th day of January in the year of our Lord 2019. Chair O'Neil Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Justin Campbell, Rufus Boer, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, I entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Let's give them a round of applause.
So just real quick, just wanna thank the mayor and all the city commissioners for making this happen. It's a big deal for the task force. More importantly tomorrow, January 11th is Human Trafficking Awareness Day and for the third year in a row, we're gonna post an awareness walk beginning at 5:00 PM, right across the street at the school district office. And then we're gonna walk across the bridge into East Palaca and then turn around and come back and then back at the school district. Everything's set up, we'll have some light refreshments. We're encouraging anyone to please spread the word. We've already sent a whole bunch of flyers out and stuff, but if anyone here is interested, it's not an RSVP, there's no invitation needed, just show up, school district office tomorrow at 5 o'clock. Thank you again, Mayor.
Is there a Human Trafficking Awareness color?
Blue.
Blue.
That color. Also, at this time, we've got one proclamation for MLK. We're gonna wait and pass that. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask that we continue to move agenda until such time, we'll move into public comment and then we'll come back and ask them to be recalled. I've got, I'm gonna ask the airport, I'm gonna ask the airport advisory board to come up at this time. Mr. Newble, you would come up along with the members of the advisory board to give us some information about the fly-in.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Holmes, and the City Manager, good afternoon. Wayne and I, on behalf of the Airport Advisory Board, wanna thank you for the privilege of serving you, our city and our community at the airport. The members of our aircraft advisory board that serve with Wayne and I are John Browning, Melissa Miller, Ken Johnson, Jeff Hathorn, Hugh Rawls, and Dana Jones. And this group is made up of professionals that are extremely passionate, knowledgeable, and committed to aviation and to the airport. And we want to thank you for letting us serve. It means a lot to each one of us. We also wanna thank you for letting Ken Johnson and myself serve on the selection committee and letting the full board give an advisory selection opinion for the airport engineering firm. We also wanna thank you for your support and contributions to the airport fly-in. Your advisory board members, most of us donate thousands of dollars personally, not including our time investment, because we love our city and the airport and we believe in the part that aviation plays to our community and the world around us. So we hope to see you at our no-charge, free parking, free administration, admission, and food for donation, January 26th, 2019 fly-in. And I think each of you have seen the flyers and if you don't have one, there's more at the back and we invite each of you all to come too. Thank you very much for letting us do all this and for supporting us.
Thank you. And as we continue on, we wanna definitely thank you guys for all the work and your commitment. The fly-in is awesome and I'm sure Mr. Yule is in the back and he's gonna give us, he's gonna continue to give us information about the fly-in, but it's an awesome event in the community that brings out thousands from all over to get it forth as an opportunity to showcase to Palaca. And we just thank you guys for all your work and your commitment to the community.
Thank you too. And John, does it?
I wanted to say something. We look at just the fly-in that you have, but it's more than that. Our airport has definitely changed over a period of years. It's been upgraded every year and our engineering firm has worked to help us, the FFA and the other.
EOT.
EOT people have worked to help us get funding, to do stuff that we never would be able to do. And all of you give your time. Some of the folks come from out of town and they take time from your busy day and most of them are pilots, so I'm amazed when they start talking about stuff I never know about when I get to a meeting. But we need to give you all a real big vote of thanks for things you do for us that nobody else does. Thank you. Give your hands up.
And I have one more comment too, if you don't mind. I know that Mr. Yule gets paid wages like Mr. McLean.
Nobody wants to pay him.
But I want you to know that the Airport Advisory Board is very deeply ingrained in the life out there at the airport and John does an outstanding job. The other day when I was visiting, he was answering three phones at one time. And you know, it's just amazing how he carries on all by himself most of the time or a lot of the time and just wonderfully serves our community and is so important. And we had a citation, Jen, the day before was Bass.
John Morris, the CEO of Bass Pro Shops.
Yeah, you know, he was in there with a nice, nice ride.
I'm trying to hit you.
But anyhow, thank you all very much.
So I get a feeling bad about how busy I am. I think about Mr. Ricker's there, her dual role right now.
Well, she's been pretty much two people.
While we're in the spirit of airport, we're gonna continue on. We're gonna open up public comment at this time. Public comments will be limited to three minutes, no act will be taken, no topic to discussion. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please fill out one of the yellow cards in the back of the room so that we will have an accurate record of your attendance today and your comments. At this time, Mr. Halesko, will you come forward?
Good evening to the commission and to the City Manager and City Attorney. Andrew Halesko, Program Manager with Passero Associates. Actually here tonight, just a quick thank you from Passero Associates for hopeful new contract for the stormwater drainage design work on South 14th Street. I haven't been in front of you in a few months and wanna come and say hello and let you know that we do appreciate all the work that you give us. I also wanted to introduce the two engineers that are the primary technicians that you're gonna be working with, because I know sometimes you see me and you don't necessarily get to see the people that are really doing that heavy technical work. So Matt and Bruce, stand up please if you would. On the left is Matt Singletary. Matt's been with Passero about 10 years. Actually, his first major assignment working with Passero Associates was doing the construction administration for your terminal building, access road, aircraft parking, taxi A B and hangar project back in 2007 and 2008. So that's a long way, Matt. Matt is Northeast Florida boy, born and raised in Jacksonville and FSU graduate.
Unfortunately.
There we go. I'm outnumbered today. That's right. On the right is Bruce Bradley. Bruce has just known with us, just joined us in the last year, also from Jacksonville and a civil engineering graduate from UNF. And he'll be working with Matt and again, there can be major technicians to try and solve and fix some of the drainage problems on South 14th and the greater area. And I just wanted you to see the people that really do that work and again, express the appreciation from Passero for continuing to work for you and non-aviation work and downtown work, so appreciate that very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Next up, this is Bridget Chamberlain. North Central Florida Alliance.
And I will expand it out on that because it's a left, right, and very quick amount of time. I'm Bridget Chamberlain. I work for the North Central Florida Alliance for the homeless and hungry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what I'm coming before you is to make you aware of for the 13th year in a row that we will be doing the point in time count for the homeless. And what that is, is every year HUD mandates that in the last 10 days of January, the communities go out and count the homeless of who is unsheltered but also sheltered. This year, the count will be happening on January 23rd. We will have volunteers coming out into the community, actually on the morning of January 25th, to come out and assist and do, I wanna say kind of a backup for the volunteers that we have already out here in the community that will be doing the count on the 23rd. Most of the time when we do this, it's cold, it's rainy. Our volunteers, they're not paid volunteers, they go out and do this because this is their calling. This is what they do and they wanna help people. So once we have the numbers as to what we have in the community for this year, I would like to be able to come back and present them to you and make you aware, but I also pledged to where I will be a more familiar face in front of you and you will hear as to what we are doing and what our community partners are doing to help work with the homeless and resolve homelessness here and put them out there.
We definitely look forward to hearing from you and thank you again for your work.
Thank you.
Any comments from the commission? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and we'll move back to agenda item 1B, 1A.
This is our MLK Martin Luther King Jr. Day proclamation for January 20th. I'm gonna ask Mr. Benjamin and anybody else from the public count after the mayor and Phil Rock Council come forward at this time. This proclamation reads as follows: The Dr. Reverend, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union through his teachings, which continue to guide and inspire us. Whereas Dr. King advanced the cause of civil rights throughout the South in spite of the dangers associated with his work. Locally while taking part in the St. Augustine Civil Rights Movement, Dr. King was arrested on June 11th, 1964 on the steps of the Monson Motel Restaurant. His famous letter from a St. Augustine jail to his friend Rabbi Israel Dresden urged him to recruit rabbis to come to St. Augustine resulted in the largest mass arrest of rabbis in American history on June 18th, 1964 at the Monson Hotel. Whereas on the eve of his death, Dr. King said, "We have an opportunity to make America a better nation. I may not get there with you, but I want you to know tonight that we as a people will get to the promised land. Though we've made great strides since the turbulent era of Dr. King's movement, his work and our journey remain unfinished. And whereas recognizing that our nation has yet to reach Dr. King's promised land, it's not an admission of defeat but a call to action during these challenging times. As our capacity to support each other remains limitless to make our communities better with increased opportunity for all citizens by carrying Dr. King's work, by breaking the cycle of poverty, reinvesting in our schools, his education unlocks the child's potential and remains our strongest weapon against injustice and equality. And whereas Dr. King, whose message transcends national borders, devoted his life to serving others. So as we observe Martin Luther King holiday and the day of service on Monday, January 16th, let us ask ourselves what Dr. King believed to be life's most urgent and persistent question: What are you doing for others? By lifting up our brothers and sisters through dedication and service, we honor Dr. King's memory and reaffirm our common humanity. Now therefore, I chair O'Neil Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim January 21st, 2019, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Federal Holiday of Service in Palaca and call upon our citizens to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects and events on Martin Luther King Jr. Day and throughout the year. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida on this 10th day of January in the year of our Lord 2019. Chair O'Neil Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Boer, and Justin Campbell and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Commissioner Boer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. We'd like to present this to you on behalf of the city. And do you have any words for us about the ceremonies that are gonna take place this
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite each of you to attend and participate in the events that we plan for January 21st. We will have the MLK Parade beginning at 10:00 AM from 7th Street down to the riverfront. And then from 11:00 to 4:00 PM, we will have activities at the riverfront. We will have a full program with singers and dancers, music from every genre. We will also have food vendors and merchandise vendors and art vendors and just a lot of things happening in celebration of the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you. And breakfast, yes, we will also do the celebration breakfast on the 19th, which is Saturday morning, beginning at 9:00 AM. That will be at the Levine Gardens and if any of you are interested, I do have some tickets tonight and there are tickets at the level throughout the community. We would love to have you come and support us. Thank you. Mr. Campbell.
For our parade, what we've done is we've transitioned from the term march and we're doing an actual parade that we're encouraging citizens to come out. Our grand marshal for the parade is actually Ms. Ruth Benjamin. She was the founder, one of the founding members of the African-American Cultural Arts. So we wanted to pay homage to what she has done and actually stepping back in to lead the, to help lead the organization back to where it used to be. So again, give a round of applause for our grand marshal.
And also, let's go ahead and give a round of applause for the African-American Cultural Arts Council and the work that they're doing in celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Palaca. And so let's give them a round of applause. Moving on to item 3 of the agenda, which is our consent agenda. For tonight's consent agenda, we have items A through N on the agenda. Are there any items on the agenda that you wish to have removed at this time?
C, please. Item C.
Are there any items besides C? Hearing none. Is there a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to accept all items excluding teams for discussion.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Campbell, second.
Second.
Like Mr. Brown. Any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 3C of the agenda, to Doc. Resolution Number 2019R03, accepting a proposal for trade-in current fleet of golf carts and lease purchase of the new fleet of 2019 Easy Go Golf Carts, authorizing execution of all documents associated with 54-month lease agreement to effectuate the transaction. Ms. Becker.
Yes.
Just got a question around the number of golf carts we have. Did we ever do like an assessment as it related to the state or the conditions of those golf carts? Or we have any issues with them as it related to the functionality of those? To change them all out, 54 at a time? I think if we could graduate them or split them up, half and half or something along those lines, it won't hit so hard as it relates to.
So the lease amount has not changed, well, I'll take that back. The lease amount goes up $1,000 versus however, the golf equipment that we just renewed earlier went down $2,000. So within the budget, we are still right there. We're actually saving a little bit of money. Andy goes through, this is with Easy, Easy Go. They previously had the golf cart, 54 carts, were just trading them in. Apparently, the batteries, as it relates to golf carts, run out and that they become more of a maintenance headache than it is just trading them back in. Easy Go is a really good company to work with us. They hold the state contract. They're also donating 12 golf carts to the fly-in, free of charge, to where last year we actually had to rent those. So they're really working with us on this and this is just a recurring contract that is actually in the franchise agreement that we signed with the golf course.
Right. So that was the one thing I was gonna point out to you, Commissioner, that this was actually part of the franchise agreement, that we committed to doing the replacement. And so I don't foresee it coming back again.
Or another.
And I will tell you that recently, every year, I'm on the Lee Conley House Board of Directors and we have a charity golf tournament at the golf course in December and out of, I think we had 18 teams, no, we had 17 teams. Each team gets two golf carts and they barely had enough to cover our teams that were actually working. And this, they had been kind of dealing with that, limping this along until they could get to a place where they can renew this lease. And it's important, you know, because that's where a lot of their.
That's how they get around the golf course.
The meat and potatoes, right, of the community.
And it's in the, it's in the agreement and it's just one of these things that'll be recurring every five years or six to four months.
And those were some maintenance issues they were having?
Batteries, right. The batteries just wear out after a while, after so many charges.
If it's only the batteries, you know, we got that one stop, one stop right here in town, it's a local business.
So I'll say, number one, we have, it's written in the agreement that we will renew and get them, ensure that they have the golf carts that they need to bring in their revenues. Also, I will say that you can't be kicking the can down the road if you don't become on this cycle. So we have a golf cart that's 12 years old and then it's time to replace, you know, hundreds of golf carts, whatever it is. It's just, it's kind of the same thing idea with the police cars and the, if you become you on a cycle, then you don't have to deal with the maintenance and the issues that we have seen hit our budget.
And some of them have damaged cycles, some of them don't back up anymore. You know, just once they get so worn out, they just have to have.
Right. I mean, I like, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I.
Stagger, stagger the second.
When we, when we, when we see 54 turning out at one time, if we could have staggered those, not only that, but are there any reports as it related to the true maintenance that's happening on these units? I mean, as you go one year, two year, three year, are they really breaking that much or whatever?
If you break it up into three different cycles, which I understand we could definitely look into doing, you're still gonna have three different lease payments on the same number of three different golf carts, or three different. So I mean, at some point, you're gonna end up being where you are, but we can absolutely look at replacing, keeping them for maybe a couple of years past their, their lease life and then renewing them. I don't know what, I don't know enough about golf carts to really speak on.
Right. But that can happen with, just working with you, running the numbers, looking at what we have and working with the golf course a little bit closer to see actually are they breaking that much versus just cycle them out?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's all I.
Anything else on item 3C?
No.
Seeing nothing else, I entertain a motion at this time. Motion to approve. There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell, is there a second?
Second.
Second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed, one, we have one in opposition, motion passes by vote 301. Moving on to item 4, it's an updated request for funding for the Ford Quench Studer Downtown Palaca, Project Finn Bates, Daniel Martinez, and Robert Mills. downtown Palacca, project Ben Bates, Daniel Martinez, and Robert Mills.
Yes, I had requested that on the, I requested it on, be put on the agenda, and I worked with Mr. Dan Martinez. I've known him for about 15 years. After he retired as a VP from GP, he began consulting, and I had the pleasure of going working with him on his computer systems or whatever, all his technological needs. He's, he shared a few things with me as it related to what they're trying to do, and it's very much in line with what the city wants to do as it relates to revitalizing Palacca, especially the, you know, the downtown business district. And what he shared with me sparked my interest, so I thought that I would like to bring him in and have him to share that in with the rest of the commission and the community. So, and I've also known Mr. Bates for nearly about that time. So, these are two gentlemen that are coming off the bench and looking to help restore this city. We've had, we used to have a vibrant city at one point. They don't have a need to actually take part in this. They're just going to do whatever they can to help revitalize Palacca, and I thank them for coming forward with that. So with that being said, I'd like to hear a few words from them, let them share what they have.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, Mr. Diggers, Mr. Holmes, thank you for allowing us to be here. We're excited to be here. We're here for a request for funding. As everybody is aware, Quinn Studer has agreed to consult with the city of Palacca in the revitalization of downtown. He's been in town twice. We have an agreement with him to provide consulting services, to put together a plan for us to move forward with the revitalization. I know there's been efforts in the past to do things, but it seems like things have been done and then put on the shelf. We intend this time to move forward and to see it to fruition. And we're excited about where we are. We see more positive comments in the community. Mr. Martinez, and I can tell you that people stop us on the street, we get telephone calls, we get emails, thanking for whatever is happening. They're excited about what's going on and just the excitement that's going on. We met last Thursday night with the Downtown Merchants Association and the Revitalization Group. I would say there were probably 30 to 35 people in attendance. We met for some two hours. It was a very positive meeting. We all felt great about where we are, and we'll begin meeting probably once a month going forward as we draw everybody together so that we're all hitched up to the same wagon and we're all pulling in the same direction. What we're here for tonight is a request, the funding for the, for Mr. Studer's services as well as his organization with expenses is approximately $30,000. We have already raised $7,500 from the private sector. The Chamber of Commerce has already agreed to fund $7,500. We're asking the city to fund $7,500, and we will be approaching the county for $7,500. We think this is a great investment in our community because it's proven that if we're going to improve our county, downtown Palacca is the key to it, and we have to have revitalization of downtown, and that's what we're working on. What we've done, one of the things that Mr. Studer has taught us, and we've all given you his book, but it must, everything must be transparent. So what we've done, we formed a 501(c)(501), called One Putnam, the number one Putnam. John Rowe at CRA has agreed to be the Treasury. All funds will go to the 501(c). Every quarter, the financial statement on the income versus expenses will be publicized in the Palacca Daily News. So everybody knows where every penny is coming from and where every penny is going, so there's no games being played. We want to be above board so that this is a win-win for everyone, and no one would have a reason to object as we all come together to try to improve our community and make it a better place to live, work, and play. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we just thank you for your support and would anticipate that you would support this effort as we continue to move forward to make our city what we all want it to be.
Any questions for the commissioner? About one speaker card, do you want to?
I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait till afterwards.
Do we, do we have the money? Can we get it from our chip funds?
Well, this is an item that we were brought on, or this is going, I'm going to make a recommendation in a minute to remane this to the CRA. That's where it is best fit, and we will let the CRA make a vote on that, and then, if need be, to come back to the commission. So that's going to be my recommendation.
And there is $25,000 in the CRA Downtown District Marketing/Promotions General Ledger Line. You can take it from there, and according to Ms. Becker, it's justified to take it from there, or the CRA could create a more appropriate contribution in the nation line. The city attorney was, gave us a very thorough opinion on whether or not we do or have met procurement, and that's included in the agenda package.
Correct.
You can also take it from general finance, wherever. So I've got one speaker card, Commissioner Rawls, who will make sure we welcome you into the city and have to come up and give you permission.
Got several questions from Mr. Martinez and Mr. Bates.
Just taking that.
Jeff Rawls, 11th in the car, Street Platte. Ford Putnam, did they handle services themselves of Mr. Studer?
No.
Putnam Ford?
No.
Has Mr. Studer been paid?
No.
Because I was at a meeting where he said he was paid $20,000, but as a millionaire, the money didn't go directly to him, went to his foundation and the people that work for him. You were at the meeting, or remember, you were there as you introduced him. He said he was paid $20,000. You're trying to raise $30,000.
Twenty plus expenses. We have to make the expenses, we need $10,000.
I, I watched the videotape. He never mentioned expenses. He just said $20,000 for five months. That's what he said. Now you're asking for $30,000. So he said he had been paid $20,000 for five months of his service. Now you're saying he hasn't been paid anything thus far. Okay. The 501(c)(3), the One Putnam, will they buy, hold, or sell any real estate in downtown Palacca?
No.
Will they be involved in any construction renovation or improvements of any building downtown?
No. It's strictly a funding organization to have transparency, so there's no misunderstanding, there's no question about funding, who's receiving, where it's going, the public, and everybody will know where every penny is going.
So your, your group has no interest in any redevelopment, revitalization, construction, demolition, remodeling downtown at all?
None, no.
Okay. Okay. Because I did see a contract signed by Mr. Martinez attempting to purchase the James Hotel at one point. Your counterpart, Mr. Spalding, has been inquiring about real estate that my family owns. On top of that, I find out that you guys have a limited liability corporation that you have called Putnam Ford or Ford Putnam. How does that relate to this?
Ford Putnam is simply a group of individuals that's working exactly what we're talking about.
Before I left the office, I printed off a copy of.
To make the county and the city better, and we're the ones that got Mr. Studer interested in Palacca.
So Ford Putnam LLC. Ford Putnam LLC is a limited liability corporation that you established. Ed Hestrom was your attorney, said enough, you were the managing member.
Correct.
Okay. Ford Putnam LLC has been attempting to purchase or tie up real estate downtown.
No, sir.
Okay. So just so we're clear for the record.
May I ask you one question?
Absolutely.
One of the things that Mr. Studer has emphasized, that we've got to get local people to be involved in downtown. So if you question that, you begrudge us from investing in downtown if we want to.
It would just be that you're hiding behind the veil of 40-plus people as Putnam Ford, behind Ford Putnam Ford LLC. That's what I'm trying to get clarity on. Okay? Because you have been downtown trying to buy and tie up real estate. I'm privy to that. There's no doubt about it.
And you've done the wrong way.
And there's, but a minute ago, you said you weren't, so just for clarity sake.
We have nothing tonight, and that's what you asked.
But what you're asking us all to do is to fund, if you'll give just a couple seconds, to fund $30,000 to your benefit so you can actually tie up and improve real estate, which I think is a great idea, but I think you should do it with your private money, not with the public's money. That's all I really came to say. Thank you very much for your time. You, I'll take questions if you have any.
Any questions for the commissioner?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any comments? Mr. Brown?
No. Well, I mean, I've already made my comments as it related to what they brought forward. I think it's a good idea for the city, at least. I mean, and then we have other, we have other people with skin in the game who is willing to invest in downtown Palacca, be it the Chamber of Commerce, be it the county. We're, we have skin in the game because it's going to definitely benefit the city of Palacca. And then the private group that's willing to invest, in my opinion, that's what we're going to need. We don't have anybody else who's willing to invest in downtown if things are moving, we're moving, but we're moving now at a snail's pace, and we've got people coming on board that are really willing to invest in downtown Palacca, and that's what I like to spark.
I will have something to say. For years, we have done studies to do the studies to do the studies, and I'm happy to hear you say that. When you embark on this journey, that we'll be making some progress and changes because we'll never get there unless we make those steps towards it. I think that we need to search and look for any idea that will help this city flourish. We had a flourishing city for a long time, and we just got some bad luck. Now our luck is changing and the city is getting better, and the people who have lived here for years and given their time and everything seem to be wanting to cease to help. But the rest of our commission wants to do that, and I want to thank you all for it.
Well, my quick question is that we have people that would say that there was some property downtown, maybe it'll put a spark up under them to do something with the properties that they have. So as a result, thank you for leading the charge. We've talked about it for several years, and it's time to actually put some fire behind our words. So I'd go along with the recommendation of Commissioner Borum, and we just got to do what we have to do. In order for us to get something, sometimes we have to dish out some money. So I'm, I'm in total agreement for it.
Like one more speaker card. Ms. Conover, you want to come forward at this time? Just give your name and address that you came for.
I'm Andrea Conover. I live at 105% Drive in East Palacca, and I'm the new proud owner of the Coca-Cola bottling plant, and I'm going to turn that into a study city brewer company. And I personally think that we shouldn't put money into another consulting study. Mr. Studer's book is interesting and helpful, but I think there is enough smart people in our town, a lot of dedicated groups between Revitalize Historic Palacca, Downtown Palacca Inc., there's individual business owners that have made the investment in the past, and new people like me working on it now. And I think instead of putting money to get another study, and it's been done before, they're sitting on the shelves, like, let's use the $30,000 for actually doing something with it instead of getting another study. I think we'll get more ideas from reading Studer's book, but we can do the marketing ourselves, we can put up more signs, we can run some events, $30,000 would get us a long way down that path. I don't think we need to spend any more money. I've heard his presentations, haven't read his book yet, but I don't think that we need to spend public money for yet another study.
And I'm not being combative, but I definitely think that at some point, you need someone from the outside to come in and help facilitate certain things. We talked about, we've been at this point so many times, and we've gotten nowhere. Not saying not to downtown, not to do anything for those organizations. However, sometimes you have to have someone to come in and build a camaraderie of those various organizations to put the fire. So when they leave, we have the necessary tools that we can, we know what to do with the tools. Yes, we have the tools, but sometimes we have to have somebody to come in, just like the pencil. When you are in elementary school, somebody had to come in and teach you how to use that pencil. Yes, we have everything that we need, we know we do. However, we have to have somebody to come in and show us how to use what we have. So when they leave, we are equipped to make sure that we can do what we can do to make sure that this city and this county becomes that vibrant community that we want it to be.
And I think, I really want to tell you, I think that we have gotten to a point where we get stymied sometimes when we live in places and take stuff for granted, when we have somebody with eyes that are coming from somewhere else to look at us, they see potential in us that we have missed or overlooked or not having it done. And I've sat in this seat a really long time, and I've seen a bunch of the studies, and we've gotten them, and some of them have helped us because our waterfront has changed. All of them, all of them may not help, but those eyes and ears from the outside and going places, I try to, when I go to meetings, look at other cities, see what they're doing. But we need sometimes that boost and that spirit to help us get there. And if we have people who retired and had businesses and stuff in this town, they want to still stay and help it get better, I think that we have an obligation to look at every avenue we can to make what we want to do better.
Sure, going to be, get some deliverables on what's, you know, come out of the study and, because I don't think that that's been very apparent yet on, you know, what the actual deliverables, deliverables are going to be and who sits on the committee, and that really hasn't been discussed openly that I've heard yet, so.
Ms. Hestrom?
I want to say that I agree with you. Palacca is full of really intelligent, smart people, very talented people, and very dedicated people. The way of the future is public-private partnerships because we can each take our $7,500 separately and try to do something with it, or we can pool it all together and get more bang for our buck. Is it a study or is it an action plan?
Action plan.
It's an action plan. Studies are studies, action plans, they're going to move us forward. He's very dynamic. There are many communities out there who have gone into public-private partnerships where everyone has skin in the game. Everybody has a reason to see it succeed. And I, I'm not here to agree or disagree with anyone just to facilitate whatever the business is that the city commission directs us to do, but I just kind of wanted to clear that up. It's just not, it's not a study, it's an action plan, and it's a, it's a person who's going to lead us forward into that action. Look at, PYP is a product of Quinn Studer, and they've put on a lot, monthly, we've got an event going on by PYP, kudos to them for bringing a little bit of action back downtown, and, you know, he got the millennials involved. So there you go.
And again, thank you, Ms. Conover, for your, for your commitment and investment into the community. I've been kind of, I think I'm probably the one person who's spent the most time around Quinn Studer on this commission. I've had an opportunity to go pick some calls, had an opportunity to have additional conversations. I think the most interesting thing that I've seen with Mr. Studer, at first glance, my thought was, this guy's saying a lot of what we've been saying here in Palacca. And it's easy to assess the beauty of the community, what the strengths are in this community, I think, but the one thing that separates Mr. Studer and the Studer Institute from most other people in this community who talk about how we develop Palacca, first down on the commission, one of the things we talked about from the CRA standpoint was the fact that there had never been a comprehensive plan of economic development within the central business district. And I remember Commissioner Flag, as a former mayor, talking about the fact that that had never been in place, and my analogy was, we've always had a playbook but never run the plays. And so as time progressed, we reached out to several entities, looking at opportunities to create economic development plans, feasibility studies, and all those different things that will allow us to be able to market this community. But the thing that was most interesting for me with the Studer Institute, and particularly Quinn Studer, was he was able to do something, and he coined, and the phrase that he always uses, getting $500 off the sidelines. But he's been able to create energy that I haven't been able to create, this commission hasn't been able to create, this community hasn't created in a very long time. And so there's a buzz all around. I, I heard. I, I heard Commissioner Rawls say during his campaign, one of the things that we have to look at doing in this community is we have to build Putnam County from the inside out, meaning from downtown development out into the community. Because people come to Putnam for Palaca. They don't pick, that's what they come to Putnam for. And $7,500 of city funds or CRA funds or any funds is a drop in the bucket. When we started talking about someone who's bringing metrics, uh, they're bringing, they're giving us clear direction on feasibility studies, on state of the community, they've already done at least two, at least two surveys and got the metrics back on those that galvanize the millennial groups. But I think also he, they bring a vast knowledge that many of us don't have. We have the consciousness and the foresight of what we want our community to look like. But we haven't done programming in the same manner from a comprehensive standpoint. Individually, we've done it. I've done it for my own, I've done it for my own businesses. But individually, we've done it. We don't have that staff person who's doing program on a regular basis. So you've got a consultant who comes in for a fraction of what you pay a full-time employee. The last employee we had made three times what we're talking about, made, this is one-third of that salary of benefits. So you're talking about bringing someone in who's going to come in with programming, who's going to come in with a direct plan on how to build your community up, create the walking districts, create the metrics, create the aesthetics, do all the surveying, do all those other things that are necessary to build your downtown districts up, the central business districts at a price that's less than landscaping. And that's the part for me, at the end of the day, we know how much you spend on traffic studies. We know how much you spend on marketing analysis. We know how much you spend on weight finding. But it's priceless to get people in your community energized, to get them together to look at what's in place. And so I, I understand the conversation. I do agree there has to be clear metrics that are outlined in a public forum. And everything I've seen thus far has been public dissemination of information at the county and multiple workshops where the public's invited in. And I, I don't think there will be anything differently, but I, but we will assure you that the public will be involved. Uh, all the local groups, organizations that, uh, that are invested here have already been vetted in this particular endeavor. And I think that should be the case. And so if we're going to use public funds, I think it's very clear that there has to be, it has to be open. The process has to be one that's vetted and it has to be something that's going to continually be conveyed. The other piece is civic engagement, civicon, civic conversations, getting the newspaper involved, changing the way that we actually present the community from a written standpoint and changing the level of education of our everyday citizen is the other phase of this program that's different from anybody else that I've spoken to as it relates to economic development within this community. And this is before we've even get into funding sources and how, and if there are other opportunities out there or there may be other places that we can actually go in and do some things that cost us nothing. Because there are grant opportunities that are available, you know, for other, for other things. But I think collaboration becomes key to the whole project. And I understand the concerns that have been living and those concerns are addressed. One of the reasons I let the conversation go on is because I want, I want the dialogue to be open. Typically in public comment, it's addressed to the commission. But I want it to be open and all questions be put out there before you move forward. And so that's my opinion. And I, I've had an opportunity to go and to see. And it's little things from a programming standpoint that, that I miss and I've got two marketing degrees. And so, um, but I think that overall, the one thing that, that really excites me about it is I've seen business owners in this community who had no thoughts of coming into downtown Palaca where these buildings have been vacant forever. You know, come with the same energy that Ms. Conover had, you know, and the vision she had of bringing in a microbrewery into a building that had been abandoned for many years. And so I think there's an opportunity to raise those concerns, but also for us to use it as a galvanizing tool so that we can have a comprehensive plan that meets, that allows everyone to have true input. And I think public dollars will allow people to have true input into the process. And so, and that's the one, that's just my, that's my thought on the whole thing. And so, um, you know, and I guess my sentiment is that $7,500 is a mere fraction of what we were paid to bring someone in to do programming at this level. And so I'm excited about the opportunity. Any other comments?
Well, just one last comment. Again, I'm, I'm about to sit here, what have you. And I've been hit a number of different occasions. Um, you know, why don't y'all let certain businesses come in or what have you? Why don't you bring this? Why don't you bring that? Well, again, what we can offer, we don't stop, we have not put up one barrier at all with a business wanting to come to Palaca. In fact, this is one of the key pieces that we can utilize in our tool is to help incentivize this. And again, uh, we imp, you know, we in public-private partnerships now and it's no longer, you know, you come in and you do everything on your own. It'll take us forever to get everything revitalized in that manner. And then to pull things off the shelf, when we do pull it off the shelf, what are we looking at? I mean, so if we got somebody who've already got this whole plan in place, I think it will help do the, uh, it'll be a great benefit to, to the city. And, um, with that being said, I'm, I'm, I'm through with my comments and I'll just make my one last comment after, in terms of moving to the side.
I think the beauty of it, Commissioner, is this, the whole plan hasn't been put into place because the whole plan has a portion which has community input. And, you know, one reason that I advocate for this is because it allows the community to have that input portion into it. Because again, there's some fact-finding that comes out of it. There was public meetings that come out of it. There are all those opportunities to continually talk. And I think that allows, um, some of the historical, um, portions to come in, but also perspectives that are different, that may be ideal for what we're doing. Because Palaca isn't Pensacola, but there are, there are a lot of similarities to what they're doing based upon where they are. You know, the biggest difference is they're on the interstate and they've got a beach. But they've got a river as well and it, it creates opportunity. And so there are some parallels. When you look at the length of their downtown, you look at some of the, the other avenues. And I think if you read the book, the book only gives you a fraction of what you truly see when you actually go off those grounds and you sit down with Stuter and start and realize what steps were placed to create everything from racial diversity and hiring to creating parallels in black business districts that are just like, kind of like the 11th Street District is for Palaca. And, and also in looking at how you program certain blocks and you get people like your legal community involved to do landscaping. You know, we've got groups that are willing to do landscaping and donate funds already to the city. And, but also in tying in, um, those pieces like the microbrewery to that entire puzzle, which turns this whole thing on a different level. And that input and the studies that you've done, uh, the things that we've done collectively over the years, when you bring all that stuff together and you've got someone who facilitates it, it, it stops us from operating in silos and it gets us the comprehensive plan that we've been asking for. And the one thing that really excites me is just the opportunity at a nominal cost to have the comprehensive economic development plan, something that we haven't gotten, um, from the chamber or from the city or from Main Street or downtown Palaca or Revitalize over the years. And so that's the big piece. And the great part about it is all those entities will be involved in this. So. Any other questions or comments? Do you have anything else you want to add? Because I, I do like talking. But I want to make sure we get all the comments out at this point. Gentlemen, you have anything else?
See, I've already got the money on the side.
So your hands are off. And so, um, it started and there's a movement and I'm, I'm excited to see people buying property and having visions that are greater than what they see today. And so, um, at this point, I entertain a motion.
I may, I'll make a motion to, um, move this item to the CRA.
February 11th.
February 11th meeting.
Are we moving it with a recommendation to the CRA or?
A recommendation to approve the, um, item as a, um, contribution for the revitalization.
Second. The motion is second. Um, we've got some discussion under this. My only question with the motion is, if the CRA typically makes the motion, the CRA typically makes recommendations to us, then we're kind of doing it in the reverse.
It'll still have to come back to you.
It comes, you, you basically send it to them to bring it back to us. So. I, I guess.
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask about the timeline? When they, when they let it move?
Well, I spoke with Mr., I spoke with Ms. Martinez. And my understanding was that it was no real big rush, but, um, in terms of, uh, and I told him about the next meeting and what have you. So, um, at that point, he was good with it, but, um, if it's changed, just let me know.
What's your, what's?
We, we would like as soon as possible so we can make the commitment, you know? But again, we're at your place.
Well, I guess the question, what's your question, Commissioner?
My question is, does it have to go to the CRA?
Um, based on staff recommendation as to where the.
Where the funds coming from?
Where the funds have been, and where the project is, it's in the central business district. And that's what we're, um.
But I understand that, but does it?
Well, I would like, I'd like Mr. Holmes to kind of, kind of help clear that up a little bit. It's already written up as what the recommendation was based on the staff. So I'll just let him clear it up a little bit for me.
It would just suggest that we had $25,000 in a, an account that would seem to be classified in a way so that this would be a very, um, normal expenditure in the CRA budget. And so, uh, it, without knowing anything else about urgency or timing, that would, would appear to me to have been the simplest way to move forward. Obviously, part of the CRA plan is marketing. Um, and we have an account that's already labeled marketing and we have sufficient funds in it to cover this expenditure. So simplest, straightforward, but straightforward procedure from an auditing perspective is, is to use the CRA, use this as a legitimate marketing endeavor and take it from an account that's got $25,000 in it to set aside for marketing. Could you do it a different way? I, I guess you can. If there's a certain need to, then we'll talk about it. I, if there's not a need to, that's a simpler way to go, just kids.
Just one, one question for my clarification. I thought the 25, I thought we had that set aside in the city budget as well because, and then we had a, am I? There was, there was promotion. PIO.
Right, for PIO. There was, it was a PIO promotion time. So we could real, okay. So I guess what, um, just spinning off of Mr. Holmes' comment is that we can definitely do the financial gymnastics to get this approved. More, it is more of an appropriate expense because of its nature in the CRA. However, in the general fund, you are allowed contributions, but there are certain, it's a general fund. It should be used for public. Um, it has to be completely open, completely. Are we, is the public able to attend these sort of meetings? There's just a little bit more scrutiny auditing wise as far as a justifiable expense. Can it be done? I think that it could. It's a single source, you know, as far as procurement goes, that sort of thing. Um, however, as Mr. Holmes said, there is a marketing promotions line for this type of expense and because of the area. Now, conversely, we have talked about how that is the rejuvenation of the county potentially in it or of the city from the inside out. And so could we say that it touches everyone, everyone in the entire city is able to look at this and go? And so yes, it could be justified in the, in the general fund. But like I said, there is already a line in the CRA. So you can look at it, you know, give me direction.
Tell me from, tell me from, we, we can also, we can allocate $7,500 from the general fund, from general fund and send that money to the CRA, correct, for the purposes of this project? Or we can just pay it out?
Right. And they could even transfer to the general fund. We've done transfers from CRA to the, it's, it's just, I can do the, uh, the financial gymnastics of it and I can justify it as, what is your pleasure?
I don't think it's much of a danger. My, my, my thought process, just so that we, I can put it on the record. My thought process is that the money that we have allocated for marketing in the CRA, we've already, for the most part, that program of money has already been, um, kind of spoken for, for weight finding, for, um, some of the other things based upon some of the projections that we've had over the years as to what we want to do in the CRA. I've always been of the opinion that the $25,000 isn't enough money to use for advertising on an annual basis in the CRA. And so I would hope that we just take the money from the general fund and be done with it as opposed to taking it from the CRA. Because one of the things that I want to see is, is us take, um, and pull some resources into the CBD for the purposes of doing what we got to do. And that's just my, that's my suggestion.
Again, I agree.
I know there's a motion on the floor. So, um, with that being said, is there any further discussion?
I guess with the timeline, as, as far as if it goes to the, if it goes to the CRA, the meeting that is called for the CRA is the fast fly-in. So if, for those of us that will not be here for that meeting, is there a possibility that we will be able to bring it before or call an emergency meeting for the CRA so that we can have this discussion? Or what can we do to make sure that?
You can call a CRA meeting. We just have to give seven days notice in the Palaca Daily News of a call to meet.
Well, we can even do something like.
We can even move the February 11th meeting.
Or we can even approve it. We can always get direction or ask, um, recommendation or however, from the CRA to do a transfer from there. Or we can have a portion of it. It doesn't have to be done. Like the mayor said, I can reallocate from any line. I have to be able to justify that it is a public, it, it's more of an auditing type. And you can see that it's already scrutinized expense. So I want to be sure that as long as everything is open into the public, I am able to justify that expense. Absolutely, 100% reallocating budget, creating a new line in the general fund is not the problem at all. It is ensuring that this money is being, and I'm not against or, I just want to make sure on my side, I have a responsibility for the money. So, right. So I mean, I, and like I said, I'm not for or against anything. I think it's a great idea.
Just want to make sure about it.
I am not on it. And they come January 22nd, so.
And again, I mean, I really would like to have this now, but again, I did consult with, with council. And the recommendation was that we already had something set up along, along those lines. So that's why I made the motion to move it and I've already spoken with Mr. Martinez. But again, if the time, if it's, if there's a time sensitivity that needs to move it up closer, I mean, I just need to know and understand what we, what we're dealing with. So if we need to move it up a little bit closer, just, I need to.
If you call and move the meeting up as quickly as possible.
Okay.
So that we have an understanding because if you're going to say no, then we've got to make other plans.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Uh, the next advertised meeting of the CRA is February the 11th. However, this commission has a meeting scheduled for January the 24th. Uh, we were going to call a technology workshop at 5:00 PM. Call the technology workshop at 4:00 PM. Call a CRA meeting for, or just move the CRA meeting to 5:00 PM.
Yes, sir. I think we're getting way more complicated with this. Mr. Borm is exactly right. Not knowing time constraints or anything, I told him exactly what he said. That simplest is, use the CRA. You already have a marketing budget. Go with it. However, based upon what I'm hearing, I see no problem at all. I mean, you, you've donated to a variety of different, um, entities, programs, events on, under the heading of marketing in the past. I see no problem with you doing the same thing with this directly from, uh, tonight, directly from your general fund or wherever it is that Logan thinks she can take it. So it may be that instead of re-advertising, rescheduling, moving around, meeting after meeting after meeting, we'd be better advised just to go ahead tonight if you're so inclined and, and allocate the money.
Well, and, and the only reason I made that statement was because I like for things to be very, very clean. I know that we have auditing, um, items that are, are standing. And to know something that was out there as it related to certain audit, um, items of concern and to go back and violate, uh, audit, maybe possibly, possibly unviolate them. go back and violate, or audit, maybe possibly, possibly unviolate them. I didn't want to do it in that manner, but if it's a clean operation, I don't have a problem with it. I just don't want...
Because you give it out to the general fund and their CRE, and they wanted to...
Right, but I would... Right, I just, I was just going based on what I was, council recommendation. I'm not going to go against that. But that's why we hired him.
Do you want to withdraw your, is the motion, right now, or the motion on the floor in a second?
Well, I'm, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Now, I make the motion that we go ahead and give them the money out of the general fund.
Second.
If, if the CRA, when we get their meeting, wants to reimburse it, then fine. Otherwise, they need to get started and leave her up and wait too much.
We get that. So the, so the motion is that we pay the seventy-five hundred dollars out of this, out of this CRA.
Donation.
Seventy-five dollar, seventy-five hundred dollar donation out of the general fund.
Donation to the revitalization.
Contribution.
Contribution, right. Contribution to the revitalization effort.
And, and there will be public, there will be public meetings, and subject to public meetings, and also to full disclosure.
Another thing, I'm hoping this thing will not only be for downtown, it'll start in, and we're going to have the folks we need to buy it, like the downtown one to be new, to the, to go.
One point of clarification, you got a motion in a second on the floor?
Yeah, I'm waiting on a second.
On second.
Got a motion in a second on the floor, discussion now?
Yeah, and just for clarification, Mr. Bates, because I think maybe there's a little loss in the translation when Commissioner Rawls was here. Clagon Ford owns no real estate in downtown Palatine. Clagon Ford doesn't intend to buy any real estate in downtown Palatine, correct?
No, right.
Clagon Ford doesn't have any, any skin in the game in terms of profiting from contracting Studer, contracting for renovations, any of that stuff.
No.
So when you answer, I think you answered the question that was kind of put to you in a way that I'm, I'm not sure that everybody followed, about whether y'all have made offers. That was a private group that you're a part of individually, it had nothing to do with Clagon Ford.
Nothing to do with Clagon Ford.
Okay.
And, and the whole concept is, you've got to get private people involved in downtown. That's all. That's the key to it.
Kind of motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion? Seems no. I'll call the question, Commissioner, Commissioner Moore, I'm calling. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Absolutely.
Moving on, city manager selection process, Deborah Robinson, not Robertson. Yeah, she, she...
She had it right there.
She changed it.
She changed it then.
Robert Robertson today.
Oh, I got it right here.
Good evening, Deborah Robinson, Human Resources.
Couldn't hear you.
I was just saying the same.
Come in here.
No, ma'am, we couldn't hear you.
Deborah Robinson, Human Resources.
So.
At the last meeting, it was a recommendation of a few commissioners to come up with a best practice or a guide as it contains to the city manager's search. I was informed after the meeting that there was a process that you guys had adopted previously. In the interim, I still went ahead and put together a guide from information obtained from ICMA, Green Cove Springs, Florida League of Cities, and a couple of other municipalities to kind of give you an overview of how that process looks like, and gives them a timeline. So from there, there was also a recommendation to work with someone from Florida League of Cities, and I just learned that he is on vacation until the end of the month, so.
It's a cruise ship.
It's on a cruise ship until the end. Three-week cruise, let me do that. So we, we're waiting on him to come back for a little bit of feedback. So tonight, I'm just looking for some direction as far as where you guys want to go and how you want to present with the rest of the search. As it stands right now, the job has been posted, applications have been collected, the posting has closed, and we're at about a hundred and twelve applications. So, so there's some direction.
I would say we can continue moving forward. I mean, we, three weeks out for the Florida League of Cities individual. Well, I mean, I don't think that we should have applicants continue to wait, from my opinion, even though we would like to have input. We're still breaking those, we're still evaluating those. The, the group will be evaluating those applications, right, and breaking them down. He'll probably, he'll probably be, or he or she will probably be available, I guess, somewhere in the process, so I would make the recommendation to keep, keep moving forward. I don't know what the rest of the commission pleasure is right now, so.
I want a simple clarification in your comment. When you say move forward, are you moving forward with the process of eliminating those that doesn't qualify, or like, what would be your definition of moving forward?
Moving forward.
Because I want to re-say what you said.
Re, re, moving forward, eliminating those who does not qualify.
Okay.
Clip here. Thanks.
Now, can I ask a clarification?
Yes, sir.
When you say eliminate those that don't qualify, you're talking about us just making a comparison of the posted job specs compared to the resumes, and if there's something that is obviously missing in an application, then we exclude that application, or make a separate list, and instead of us excluding it, we make a separate list and fill all that list every application that we don't think qualifies?
I think that would be the best approach.
Yeah, the way we did it historically was, you, those individuals were eliminated from being semifinalists, but they were placed on a list which said that they had certain deficiencies based upon a job description that was in place.
Okay.
So is, is that what you're just wondering?
Yes, yes.
And so, if we are, so we don't have the person from the, from the Florida League of Cities?
Correct, he's on cruise ship.
Can we ask Mr. Martinez if he'd be willing to sit on that committee? I mean, is that something that we could possibly do?
We can, we can.
I guess, I know you got, I know your time's kind of limited, but, and I know we're putting you on the spot.
I think you're so fiery, you sound fiery.
You've done more hiring than firing than anybody I've known.
I think I made an accusation to you yesterday.
So, you have... Okay, thank you. I think you fire more executives than anybody sitting in this room, for sure.
Yeah.
We have to make that into a motion. I made the motion that we had.
Second.
So motion on the floor in a second. What's this call? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We take that as an acceptance. Appreciate it.
He volunteered.
Kind of on the spot. So do we need, are we... So the, so the candidates will be reduced down to the ten semifinalists?
Yes.
And then...
Someone you're choosing is ten?
Yeah, are we choosing ten as the number again?
Fifteen to twenty. I mean, put ten to fifteen, I think is a good one.
Fifteen, well, I think fifteen would be good, because if, again, if we run... Would you, what's a good number, fifteen, ten, fifteen? Let's go with ten. We'll go with ten.
We don't get to five, tell me.
Now, okay, tell me again then. I understood that our initial task was just to basically separate those who don't meet the technical qualifications. Then you want us to wait until the city, the League of Cities representative joins the group to try to narrow it down to the ten?
The case translation to League of Cities representative.
You're going to have Mr. Martinez replace that guy, and we, and we move, okay?
And then you rank the top ten?
Yep.
Okay.
So I saw here, and this is no shade to anybody, but I don't agree that the commission should be able to add anyone at this point.
That's fine.
Add anyone back?
I don't, if, once we get to that point, because one of the things that we've come up under scrutiny was from the last time, for those that actually served on the committee, that it was a slap in the face, and we don't want to do that to the individuals that are here. And I think once we get down to that point, we really, we really just want to move forward and try to get the best person. And so if that person was not on that list, they technically are not who we entrusted the individuals to bring forth to us. So my recommendation would be that we do not have the ability, that if we want to sit through the process and have individual conversations with those that are on the committee, that that be a possibility. But as far as the, anyone that sits on the dais, be, not be able to add anyone, and, you know, at that point.
That's, that's different than what we voted on, though, what we initially voted on.
We voted on and bring a recommendation back to us.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we not, the commission not be able to add anyone outside of the finalist that is brought to us from the committee.
Semifinalist.
Semifinalist from the community.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
There's motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion? Seems done. We'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Opposed?
Yeah.
Any, Ms. Brown?
I really don't. Yeah, I do. I'm, I'm getting down to five.
You got to hear everything? It's on you.
Well, a, a no vote is a yes.
That's a fair possibility.
Are you?
There's only ever the yes. I don't, I don't, I'm not really know.
I mean, if you, if you...
I have been here for...
That's a yes, because you have to actually vote no to get that.
I know what I mean. I've been, I've sat through a little...
You, you, you're in this, though.
All right, yes.
Three to one, three to one.
You represent, you represent, you represent.
Next up. Next up. Anything else that we have on here? So when you look at the guideline, I think the guideline for recruiting the city management administrator, those who read that in its totality is a very, is a very good document. My, I've, I've read this a few times based on the one that was in there for the national search. And so seeing it in there was good, because it gives, it gives you a clear understanding of what the processes are, what your options are within the processes. And so we've clearly adopted a single-line process, which kind of puts us where we need to be. There are a couple of things on here, on...
And I just kind of did that. It's a short and dirty, so I can, and we'll fix that.
So the guideline that you have, that Mr. Driggers gave, it was just, there are a couple of things that, there are a couple of things in that that has, it's just, it's something that has become, it's a work in progress, so it'll be tweaked, but the actual process is kind of outlined based on what we've got in place inside of the recruiting, um, inside of the guy to recruit the city manager and administrator. Any, anything else that we have as it relates to this item? Ms. Trig, Ms. Robinson? Anything else? Mr. Holmes?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Driggers?
Really be a start to our new year. Thank everybody.
We're not on that yet. We're not on that one.
I got nothing else to say on this.
Commissioners, you guys have anything else on this item?
No, no.
Nothing else on this item. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, again. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. We definitely can use that expertise in this matter, and we appreciate you guys for volunteering and sticking with us. I also want to recognize the other HR director who's sitting in the back of this room today, Mr. Font, who's here joining us from low, so we thank you as well.
I gave her Ben's card.
Yeah, he does the same thing. So, we're going to move this thing forward. Ms. Driggers went into her report. We're going to hold her off for just a second so she can give it to us. In the back of the room, Mr. Lachnick, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Yule, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Um...
You know I have to talk.
No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Holmes?
No.
Ms. Becker? Here it goes. Always going to every room.
Well, I can like that. Okay. So I just have a few things. We have received a few quotes from Inspire Technology that has already partnered with the county. They would like to come and speak with you on January twenty-fourth, which is the day of our commission meeting, at five o'clock, if you are okay with discussing or entertaining them, if that is okay?
Okay, um, if I just get an invite, uh, the invite...
It'll be a meeting.
It'll be a, it'll be a...
It'll be a meeting.
It's called a workshop.
It's a workshop.
The IT workshop.
We generally give an email from email, you know, in the calendar.
We will, we will.
Yeah.
We will add it, and we'll get an invite, yeah.
So, yeah, so they're bringing forth the proposal for our IT. We've got to get the police department definitely in place so that they can stay compliant, and it's going to help us upgrade our fiber and everything else. And so we got to look at this proposal and see if it's something that, that's going to be, that we're able to do from a financial standpoint in order to bring us into the 21st century.
We're going to try to get this proposal out to you tomorrow, so you'll have plenty of time to read it, digest it, pick this up off the floor.
I haven't digested it for months.
Yeah, and there's a lot of different options, so I'm going to try to come up with a few different options. It does not mean that those are the ones we have to go with, but just kind of showing you what we could potentially do. The second thing, the auditors return on January twenty-second for their final review, which means they'll be here for a couple of weeks. And so hopefully, that report will be to us sooner rather than later. And I'm working on posting December, and so I'll bring in the first quarter report next meeting.
Always good news for you.
Tonight.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Driggers?
Thank you. The next meeting, Mr. Lachnick is bringing forward five room amendments that should get us closer to, is that all of them?
There's one more left?
One more left.
One left.
One left after the five, and that will clean us up from our purgatory, yeah, our purgatory DCA. And so that's coming forward. Also coming forward with some fire inspection fees, Mr. Lachnick and Chief Grimes are working on that. We're going to add those to the code because we didn't have separate fees for those. You look confused. No, I'm, that's what I'm talking, you look...
No.
Oh, okay, it was just, yeah. So he heard his name. Yeah. So we're bringing that forward. Staff has been working really hard. It's new year, jumped right back in, and we've had some busy days. You've already heard about the technology workshop. We want you to be able to ask plenty of questions, so you get the material well in advance. Ask the questions that you need, get the feedback that you need, because we want to bring it for action at the February the eleventh meeting, because time is of the essence on that. And that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
All right, well, again, I want to, we're closed out, we just got sworn in, so again, we're closed out, first term. I am so happy that everything went well the first term and was able to get a, a bye for the second term, so.
Unopposed.
Unopposed, I, I, I was... I was, I was blessed, I was blessed, and I certainly appreciate that. I thank God for all it has done for me. And I look forward to, with the same energy and commitment to the community. Again, I can't thank the supporters enough, as well as my family, and the great job that our staff has done for us over the past four years, and that's what's got us to this point now. The city is looking a lot better in a number of different areas as it relates to fiscal accountability. Our crime rate is really good, dropped seventeen, fourteen to ten. Those lines, as well as our economic development has picked up, and that's, those are my, my platform, so in terms of working with, with the commission. I would like to revert back to a previous meeting with what we had with the code enforcement. I think we need to continue to work along those lines. I did provide that information as it relates to Hanes City information, and also Jacksonville, that they got Fight the Blight, or whatever, I pass it on to Betsy. So if you can get that information over with the contact information, that'd be greatly appreciated. We, that's one thing that we must keep working toward as it relates to cleaning up our city, because again, the mayor has mentioned a number of times, you don't want to invite nobody into a dirty house. And it's certainly, our city is turning around, and we have done tremendous work over the past four years as it relates to the number of cleanups we've worked, worked through, and we've done our city a great, a great deal. The last thing is I want to look at is the, our insurance risk rating. I think we need to kind of focus on that as, as it relates to where we're at, and if you can kind of help give a perspective around.
We are very focused on that.
Right. So if we can focus on those... Right, so if we can focus on those things, that'll help, I think, continue to get the city and move it in the right direction.
Should be positive this year, we should have a follow-up here on the, on the high rate and stuff.
We, we had a couple of, a couple of unfortunate incidents and so we've, uh, this, this past year has been much better.
We just need to continue to change the culture, um, as it relates to that, but other than that, that's all I had and, uh, passed it, my time. Oh, thank you, sir.
Mr. Campbell?
Um, just want to reiterate, for those that are interested in the MLK, I do have tickets, tickets are twenty dollars, that's for the, uh, that's for the per-breakfast that will be taking place on Friday, on Saturday the nineteenth, um, as well. If you are a business that would like to be a vendor, um, that fee for just setting up outside of cooking food is like ten dollars, so if you want to pass out or promote your business, definitely come out, anything outside of that, I can get with you about specific prices. Um, but again, we are not having a march, we are having a parade, so we would like to see the citizens of Palaca out. We would love for you to take part in the parade and let's make this a grand event. And that would be all. Logan said enough for me.
Vice Mayor?
Well, first thing I want to say is I'm very proud to sit up here with you guys and I'm glad that you're all are back and I think we did, we did a really good job the last four days, and I tell we're back up here. Um, the other thing is that I would like for, oh, I want to thank staff, but they really make us look good and they've done it over this period of time and we can't say enough to them because they get stuff done that we, that people want us to have done. The other thing is I would like for us to put on our agenda, looking at our problems again and to start working towards doing them.
Um, we're just excited about where Palaca's going, there's opportunities, there's property exchanging hands, there's dirt moving, there's new buildings coming, there's new energy all throughout this community and, uh, we're gonna do what's necessary to move this community forward, taking into consideration all our position, um, or hesitance, but we will continually move forward and if I can coin the phrase that was kind of keyed in by Commissioner Campbell, we're continuing positioning for the tide of what's happening. We are, we're right there. Oh, I've got.
We better together, guys, just remember that.
Thank you, sir.
Legislative priorities, uh, legislative priorities, uh, will be set at our meeting on January seventeenth. Let's, let's make sure we're there at the Board of County Commissioners for that, it starts at one P.M.